I'd like to remind everyone, please make sure all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Avery.
Here.
Back.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Smith to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm holding out a prayer. Well, we just thank you once again. We honor your presence. What a privilege, a joy it is to be able to acknowledge you. You've been here at City Hall. We thank you for the powers that be, the word said, the power that we have been ordained of God. So we ask that your Holy Spirit lead and guide and direct us, even as we conduct civic business today. Psalm 134 says, "There in the law you have command and blessing when we come together in unity to give you the praise of the Lord." And our prayer is going to close of another year. We thank you now, we ask it all in Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on December 13th. So moved. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of December 9th through the 15th. So moved. Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven on the agenda is Proclamations and Commendations.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to read it from here, and if I could ask the people to please go ahead and start standing up along the wall, please. This would be Fire Chief Reed, Police Jaggers, Public Works, Supervisors Howell, Matthew, David Cooper, Ty Jackson, and Brian Harbison and their employees. If you'll go ahead and start the process. I want to say something real quick, Brett, if you'll go with them, please. As y'all all realize, we had a building collapse, I believe it was on December the 7th, and the work that these people have united, just listen to Pastor Steve's prayer about working in unity, how they all came together and just worked on their own and completed the task. The following departments, Fire Department, Police Department, Public Works, and Building Department, on December the 7th, 2002, a building collapsed on the corner of 12th and Forest Avenue that created a thread of physical injury to our public. But thanks to the swift action of Fire Chief Reed, Police Jaggers, Public Works, Supervisors Howell Matthews, David Cooper, Ty Jackson, and the Chief Building Officer, Brian Harbison, and their employees, no one got hurt, and the cleanup response was handled professionally. On behalf of our residents, I thank you for your assistance on a swift cleanup of our city. We greatly appreciate your efficiency. To ladies and gentlemen, this is a big deal that took place. Is everyone aware of what did happen? But it's almost, it's just amazing to see how the city employees all worked together at once. You may not think that you, you may think you go unrecognized, but you do not. This council and this mayor does recognize you, and we thank you, and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, city employees, for your hard work, and I couldn't agree more, Mayor Ford. That's, that was very quick action and could have been a lot worse than it was, so very much grateful for our team of people that serve our city.
Thank you. Mr. President and council, I would like to also honor someone. We had a great inauguration of all of us, and I noticed someone that was very special that was working as hard as they could in the, in the restrooms one day and keeping the venue clean as we enjoyed ourselves. And I noticed her work ethic, and I always try to keep in mind of those people that do such a job. And I want to honor Ms. Brenda Haley, if she would come forward. Ms. Brenda Haley is the head of housekeeping. She's the head of housekeeping at the venue. Ms. Haley maintains every restroom, dressing room, kitchen, and other facilities at the venue at the Cusel Landing. Ms. Haley exhibits excellent customer relations to our visitors at the venue and is always willing to help out in any way that she can. Ms. Haley is retired from the state of Alabama, where she worked for the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency as a police communications officer in the Jacksonville office. Ms. Haley is a prime example of how we as stewards for the City of Gaston should engage the public. Thank you, Ms. Haley, for setting the standards. It's our pleasure to have an employee like you and your city. Ms. Haley, I want you to know, your efforts in that day did not go unrecognized. I'm sorry I did not be able, I was not able to say hello to you, but I wanted to tell you, I said whoever that lady is, I want her name, and if we have a way to recognize her, I want to be able to do that, and today's your day.
Thank you.
So thank you. And I know somebody drove three hours. Who was that?
My best friend.
Your best friend, and who is that?
Dan.
You speak. You go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. What I do for the City of Gaston, I do it because I love what I do. I do it because I, I love people. I love meeting people. I love just doing things to stay active. I don't want to just sit home and do nothing after retirement, because we all know what happens when you do nothing. You disappear. You go away, and I don't want that to happen. I want to be here for a long time. But now I want to recognize my sister, Deborah Mowtry. She's my rock. Can't do anything without her. But we always put God first. I want to thank my best friend for over 40 years, Virginia Norman Stan. She's my ride or die. Whatever I need, whenever I need, she never let me down, and I love you, Ford. I love you, Deb. Thank you, City Councilmen. Thank you, Mayor Ford, for recognizing me. Thank the people of the venue, the administration, for just having me there present, and I enjoy working with each and every one of them. I'm a little nervous, and I'm not a public speaker, but I, I'm a little shy, but I just want to say thank you again.
Thank you.
You're safe. Thank you.
Now, Mayor, you said y'all met in the restroom.
Well.
I asked for a moment of preference.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say to you, and I don't want to stop your city council, not only does she serve Gaston, she's originally from Green County, down probably three hours. I'm another 30 minutes on the other side, and if I call her and we got something going on, because we live in a very rural area where there's not even internet, she will come down three and a half hours along with her sister and do what she can for the elderly and the children, the smaller children that we have. I run a, I'm the director of a Jefferson Community School Center down there. We try to work with ACT with children. This lady, literally, if I call her on a Friday night and just tell her, you know, what's going on, and I'm sorry, I can't do this, and I can't do this, she's going to be there the next day. We just honored a 100-year-old man, and I had 11 people that were supposed to be working with me. Not one of those 11 people showed up Friday night. Brenda got in the vein, she came all the way down there along with her sister, and she helped me get it all together, and it was like a miracle. I never thought it would happen, because I had 125 people coming, and I was all alone. So I just want to tell her I love her, not for only being my friend, but also being the person that she is. Brenda is a loving person that wants to help everybody. Thank you so much.
Please leave her in Etowah County. Let her.
I've been hustling about that.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Haley. That's, what a great testimony for our city and for our city employees. And I remember Ms. Haley when I, on the inauguration day, when I walked in, she was, she was cleaning the doors, the glass. I don't know if you remember, but I remember meeting you, and you made quite the impression. So thank you for what you do. Thank you so much. All right. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. We have none today. So number nine on the agenda, this is the time and place is advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 611 Polk Street in District Two, Michael Head being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Okay. Is there anyone wish to speak in favor? Oh, Michael, you want to speak? All right. All right. If you'll please state your name and your address for the record for Ms. Nelson.
Michael Head, Alabama Gaston. I just need about 60 more days to get this project.
How many?
60.
60 more days?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll have it, have it finished.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. We'll let anybody wish to speak in favor of the resolution.
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed this case in January of this year. There was a building permit taken out in September. There's been no work done on that. I did talk with Mr. Head and told him that if, if the council agreed to give him some additional time, he needed to focus all of his efforts on the outside. There are some issues on the outside that need to be addressed, and we'll work with him on the inside. We're asking for a resolution. Thank you.
All right. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we allow Mr. Head to have those 60 days to try to bring this property up to par. That'd be my recommendation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Wilson, second. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
I will. Just, I'm sorry, just point of clarity here. It has been our standard operating procedure for quite some time to, even if we are going to allow 60 days, to table the resolution for a maximum of 30 days, and then we'll kind of check in with you at 30 days and table it another 30 days. So I don't think there's any objection to the 60-day table, but if we can do it as a 30-day table, and then we'll have an opportunity to extend it another 30 days, is that okay with you?
That sounds good, Councilman. Yes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for that. So that would amend that from 60 to 30. Ms. Nelson.
All righty. Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Number 10 on the agenda, our next public hearing is a resolution approving alcoholic beverage license for Gaga's Bar and Grill LLC, located at 716 East Broad Street in District One, has applied for a lounge retail liquor license, Class One. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? Thank you for coming, ma'am. If you'll please come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record.
I'm Centaur Heard. I am one of the owners of Gaga's Bar and Grill, and the address is 716 East Broad Street. I took ownership in July of 2022. So I will just be opening. It's a brand-new business. It's going to be a bar and restaurant, and I'm just looking to get my liquor license approved.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
Where is that? Is that District Two?
Yeah, District Two. Well, it says District One. Is that District?
I thought it was District Two.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's right across the street from.
The Health Department.
Bob Echols Building.
Yeah.
It's basically replacing Turklegut.
No, that's the next door.
Oh, it's owned, it's, it's down.
It's actually, it used to be the Daiquiri.
The Daiquiri. I mean, yeah, yeah, that's one of them.
I think that was in District One, I believe, if I remember right.
If, if, if it is in District One, I was surprised. I think we both know some of the issues before you taking ownership. I, I wanted to kind of wait, but since we're here now, I would just ask that we not, that the negativity that was there before, that we will do what we can, and I'm open to helping in any way that I can, that it is a positive environment and a nice place for, to gather and have a good time. I'm not opposed to having a good time, but I know there was a lot going on in that area before.
Yes, ma'am. That's why I wanted to establish the date I took ownership, and this is a completely new business, and I'm trying to run it like that. I'm going to go by, I've done everything by the book. I have not opened it or done anything until I have got my approval and all my inspections and licenses from everyone. So I'm trying to reestablish that area myself.
Okay.
Will you all be serving food there?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I make a motion to adopt.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 11 is our final public hearing, a resolution approving alcoholic beverage license for Olive Garden Holdings LLC, doing business as Olive Garden Italian Restaurant, 6474, located at 835 Rainbow Drive in District Four, has applied for a restaurant retail liquor license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 12 on our agenda is a resolution appointing member to the zoning board of adjustment. This appoints Eric Wright for a term expiring on May 18th, 2025. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just want to clarify. First of all, thank you to Tim McCartney for your service on this. This is one of those boards that does have appointments from each council member, so Mr. McCartney has stepped down, and Eric Wright, who's a former employee of the City of Gaston, will be stepping in to take his place, and I appreciate Eric's willingness to serve.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Number 13 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a consulting agreement. This is for a consultant to act as the liaison between the city and various public agencies with a special emphasis on federal entities, and the amount will be $3,000 per month. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I do have a question on that. Just really not clear, if the mayor could, Mr. President, just kind of elaborate just a little bit on, you know, what type of discussion?
Absolutely. So this has to do with, I think most of y'all met him the night of the chamber event. I'm not sure his name is Jason Harper. He would be the, he would be our advocacy to the liaison to DC. He used to work in Congressman Robert Aderhold's office. I think it's to our advantage, since they're going back to line items and the budget, Congressman Aderhold is a, on appropriations committee, very well could be the chairman of appropriations. So we have already submitted a wish list for some various projects in our city, so I think it would be in our benefit to do a two-year contract, see where this heads in our direction. And when we go in March for what we used to call Work the Hill, I'm not sure what we're calling it, but that's what I plan on doing, is working the hill. So he, he'll be very instrumental in helping all of us work the hill.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 14 is a resolution. It's an endorsement and support of the efforts of Design Alabama. This is regarding a concept plan to preserve and enhance Nakalula Falls Park as well as the surrounding area. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? I think it's, be wise to note that the Design Alabama was here last week, and they gave their presentation that they did, what, in 2019? Very impressive work that they have done to help us to move forward with our Nakalula corridor, if you will, from the bottom of the mountain there on 12th Street all the way to Interstate 59. Mayor Ford, do you want to add in?
Yes, Mr. President, I know it sounds like we're asking for a lot, from the mayor's office, a lot going on with a lot of these names of these groups and everything, but not to say that there hadn't been a lot going on, but for us to do stuff, we're going to have to get the ball rolling and rolling fast, and to hire these groups, we got to get them going and get them, get the studies and give them the due diligence and get them with our department eds, and then we got to sit back and wait some time for them to do what they need to do. Then they'll present to us what we want to hear, hopefully, and then we got to come up with the money, which we've been a good, we've been pretty good about so far finding some money. So that's something I think I can be good at with some of our previous connections. So I know, I just want y'all to know, there's a lot of stuff coming at you, but I appreciate y'all's approval. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? All right. All right. Let's see. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 15 is a resolution authorizing participation in senior nutrition program and grant. This continues sponsorship of the senior nutrition program for fiscal year 2023 at Carver and Banks Park Community Centers. It authorizes grant acceptance through the East Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission, Area Agency on Aging, and the amount is $129,748. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion?
I'll say this, I did get a chance to stop by Carver and one of the other locations to just to sit in with the seniors, and I didn't partake in the meal, but it did look very good. And so I will ask of other council persons, because these persons, these citizens doesn't just live in District Three or whatnot, so if you all get a chance throughout your day, just go and visit these young ladies and men and just have a conversation with them. They do have concerns, and they also have a bit of encouragement, but it was good. I, I have a attachment to young people and seniors and veterans, and so most of my time I spend with, with seniors. And so, so I think that's why sometimes the way I am, because they going to let you know. So I'll come back and let y'all know.
We appreciate that.
But, yeah, that's good program. Appreciate those that are working it and do what they do. Thank you.
It is. That's, thank you, Councilman Avery. Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 16 is a resolution authorizing amendment to the agreement with Seduwick Claims and Management Services Incorporated. This amends the agreement authorized by Resolution Number R-02-21 for claims administration of workers' compensation by extending the term for an additional period of two years, beginning January 1st, 2023, and ending December 31st, 2024. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 17 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Rafael Malone. This is for sponsorship of the G League basketball season to include six winter league games and eight summer league games, with two weeks of playoff games to follow, and the amount is $1,500. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion?
I will say something about this as well, because I've stopped in on those games. There is quite a bit of participation. They draw in people not just from the City of Gaston, Birmingham, surrounding areas, Huntsville. It's pretty intense. They also have, I think they do live streaming and some other things, so you can see, kind of probably go back and look at some of the games and the intensity. It is, the crowd is growing. I did speak with Mr. Malone on last year, our last season, and so there was some requests. We'll see the difference that have been made with the Parks and Rec Department, but based on those requests, but nevertheless, excited to see this continuing in the community. Again, if you have an opportunity to stop by and check it out, it's pretty intense and some really good guys that really, we should be seeing on the next level.
Thank you for that. That is a very competitive league. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 18 is a resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding with the Southeastern Climbers Coalition. This establishes a partnership with the Parks and Recreation Department and the Southeastern Climbers Coalition to manage rock climbing and bouldering activities at Nakalula Falls. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 19 is a resolution authorizing approval of proposal from Weisner LLC. This is to assist the city with right-of-way acquisition for the Dale Haven Place drainage project. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 20 is a resolution authorizing agreement with MBA Engineers Incorporated. This is to provide construction materials, testing, and inspection services for the new senior wellness center located at 2829 West Meagan Boulevard, and the amount is $45,900. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 21 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Thomas McElrath. This is to provide architectural and engineering services required to construct a new covered train platform and maintenance station at Nakalula Falls Park, and the amount is not more than $39,000. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Is there any discussion?
And this is just the, this is for the, the new train station and a covered area for the new trains, is that correct?
That's what I understand, right?
Yeah. It's Heath.
And a maintenance building.
Maintenance shed?
Yeah. That's what it said.
I believe it does say that. Yeah, maintenance station. Yeah, new covered train platform and maintenance station.
Yeah.
Is that just one train station, or are we doing both at the same time?
Well, I think the maintenance station is where they pull each one of the trains in if they have to work on them or something. Like, it's just a spare. And then there's a covered area where you actually get on and off of the train.
Got you. Got you.
Just a side note to that, I was, I've been to Nakalula Falls for Christmas at the Falls twice now. I have two grandchildren, so I've been twice, and it's just amazing what Parks and Rec and our city has done up there. Last night was just magical. You couldn't hardly walk. People were everywhere.[1764.11]
People were everywhere. Train going through is just, it's really a sight to behold. I encourage anyone that has not been, weather permitting, you should really go. It is, it's just a treat. It's kind of the magic of Christmas, if you will. Beautiful area and congratulations to our team of people that have made it happen. They do it year in and year out. Over one million lights are up there. It's just a beautiful sight, so thank you to those folks. All right, Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item twenty-two is new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I've got a series, we, we have a series of appointments from the mayor's office in our pre-council folder, and the mayor's requested that we consider these under new business today so that we can get these appointments made before the end of the year since we're not meeting next week. So if it's, if it's okay with the rest of the members of the council, I'd like to suspend the rules and consider these under new business today.
Right. Everybody okay with that? I guess it needs a second, right?
Is there a second? Okay. Those in favor to consider, I believe there's eleven resolutions. These eleven resolutions today is items of new business. Let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent to consider today.
Mr. President, would you like me to read these names, appointments?
Sure, if you want to read those, that'd be fine.
Okay. First, these are appointment, appointing individuals to the Gaston Airport Authority. Kent Haney will be replacing Jonathan Welch for a term expiring July thirty-first, 2027. Craig Denny will be replacing Chad Hare, and I believe that seat's been vacant for some time, for a term expiring July thirty-first, 2027. The next one is appointing members to the beautification board. We have Fran Hawkins, Puddin MacArthur, Ann Cummins, Thomas Worthy, Pam Terrence, Dee Cordell, Sheila Billingsley, Judy Tillman, Michael Causey, Carla Miller, Melinda Marker, Rita Smith, Denise Getchall, Laura Sanchez, Kathleen Martin, Sean Blackman, Tom Banks, and Sarah Holler. Those appointments range from 2023 through July thirty-first of 2025. Next, we have appointing members to the Commercial Development Authority. Kent Haney will be replacing Jawaris Rawls. Mandel Tillman will be replacing Steve Wood. Tim Hurd will be replacing Johnny Cannon. John Reed will be replacing Ben Reed. Jonathan Welch will be replacing Sylvia Ferguson. Kyle Chambers will be replacing Bob Gotten. Hugh Miller will be replacing Wilbur Bubba Masters. John Moore will be replacing Tony Smith. And Beth Pierce will be replacing me. I've served on that board for over a decade. I've thoroughly enjoyed it. Let's see. Resolution appointing members to the community service program. Mr., Ms. Jasmine Lopez will be replacing Buster Porch as the appointee of the mayor of Gaston. The next one is appointing members to the design review board. Pat Sherman will be replacing Ben Connolly. Ann Mitchell will be replacing Jonathan Copeland. Dr. Farah Hayes will be replacing Gutierrez, Gregory Hall. Kathy Sisson will be replacing Scott Heinzman. Judy Swafford will be replacing Kevin Ferguson. Chris Day will be replacing Ricky Hunter. Elaine Spearman will be replacing Chris Williams. The next one is appointing members to the Gaston Land Bank Authority. Tim Hurd will be replacing Jamie Sledge. Grover Kitchens will be replacing Bren Crane. Bob Sissom will be replacing Brenda Marshall. Ruth Moffett will be replacing Lisa Osborne. Jesse Battles will be replacing John Reed. The next one is the Historic Preservation Board. Grover Kitchens, Tyler Harrell, Catherine Anderson, Dr. Sabrina Morgan, Tiffany Works, Kyle Pierce, and Chris Day will all be appointed for terms ranging from 2024 to September the eleventh, 2026. The next one is appointing members to the Human Relations Council. I appreciate the mayor forming this council as a continuation of the advisory committee. Ruth Moffett, Spencer Williams, Andrew Ford, Grady Robinson, Thomas Worthy, Jonathan Rowland, John Reed, Lieutenant Lane Keener, Jesse Battles, Sharon Menez, Donna Patterson, Teresa Helms Taylor, Vanessa Williams, Andrea Scott, and Amber McFadden, all for terms ranging from twenty-four to twenty, June thirty-first, or excuse me, June twenty-first of 2026. Appointing members to the Public Building Authority. Dalton Hopper, Chris Day, John Reed, Tim Hurd, Jeff Johnson, Caleb Campbell, Cole Cummins, Lou Mitchell, and Jasmine Winston, all for terms ranging from August of 2023 to August of 2027. Appointing members to the Gaston, Etowah County Emergency Management Agency Executive Committee as president of the Public Safety Committee. I've been nominated to serve in this role. And Chris Robinson, as vice president of the Public Safety Committee, will serve as the alternate. Let's see. And the last one is reappointing members to the Gaston Cultural Arts Foundation. Spencer Williams, Teresa Ray, and Kay Moore will all be reappointed for a term ending January first, 2026. Thank you to the mayor for getting after this and filling all these blank seats.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think for transparency, the mayor has forty-three or forty-seven boards that he's responsible for filling those positions. You've probably heard on that list of names that there were some, the same, certain names were said more than once. It's difficult to find people to serve on these boards. So thank you to those that have raised your hand and are willing to serve. Thank you, Mayor, and your staff for searching for those people that are, that have agreed to serve. And one of the reasons for suspending the rules today and moving forward is that a handful of these boards want to meet before the first of the year. Some of these boards have been a little dormant, and so as you can tell, our mayor, as he likes to say, he has a gas pedal but no brakes. And so I think these committees are adopting that attitude, so we're glad to see them get active and to, and to operate. All right, let's see. Any more new business?
Well, do we have to vote to actually approve? I make a motion that we approve the appointments as read into the record.
Second.
All right, Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all eleven resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all eleven.
All right, item number twenty-three is department reports, committees, and boards. Gina Hollingsworth could not be here today. She's listed on the agenda. And Chris Moles is speaking in her place. The topic is the Mayor's Action Team for Animal Concerns. This is another new committee that the mayor and his team have formed to, to address the condition of animals and just animals in general in our city. It is a monumental task, so Chris, thank you for being here and thank you for serving on that committee. I'm sure that's a thankless job, so thank you for being here.
Thank you. Start by saying I was a lot like that gentleman over there earlier, kind of in the background doing my stuff, but Jen asked me to speak, so I'm just going to read her letter that she has typed up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for allowing me to speak today. I'm a member of the Mayor's Action Team for Animal Concerns for the city of Gaston. As you're all aware, we have had a very serious overpopulation of animals in the city of Gaston for quite a while. This obviously did not happen overnight, nor are we going to repair the issue overnight. This task force was appointed, was not appointed to fix the problem. The problem belongs to everyone who lives in the city of Gaston, and it is ours as a community to change. However, we do have a vision. It involves four groups of individuals. It requires every person in those groups to be engaged and involved. Every one of these groups should have a vested interest in their roles. There can be no weak links. I have emailed all of you a copy of the YouTube video titled No Kill 101. It's twenty-five minutes long and goes into more detail than what I have time to share today. I implore you to please take the time to watch the video and please share it with others. We learn from our mistakes and how not to continue to repeat them from others' examples. This method has been successful in other cities comparable to ours, including Huntsville. But again, it took everyone being involved and it took time to get there. One of the task force leaders told me that it's the hardest thing to do and so worth it, but it's like eating an elephant one bite at a time. So going back to the four groups, first is the shelter. We are actively working on a contractual agreement with the Humane Society Pet Rescue and Adoption Center on Brook Avenue to shelter our stray animals. Every animal deserves to be treated humanely. After discussions and modifying the contract, we feel that we have an understanding that they will be open intake so that animals are not dying through injury or starvation on the streets. It will also make our city safer from dangerous at-large animals. Secondly, animal control. Lieutenant Cliff Hurd leads our animal control department. I believe and trust that he is working to get the right people in place and convey the message of the importance of responsiveness to the community, enforcing responsibility and accountability in his department. Thirdly is the community. The definition of stray is a domestic animal or person that is wandering at large or is lost. Every animal in the city belongs, not past tense belonged, belongs to someone. They weren't just dropped out of the sky. We will be asking for the community's involvement in identifying and reporting to our action team, the shelter, and animal control who these at-large animals, specifically dogs, belong to. We have asked the mayor for every animal control officer to have the equipment that is needed, including microchip scanners, to assist in identifying the owners. This may include knocking on doors and asking questions. Our primary goal is to keep the dog out of the shelter and to get them back home. At that point, we can work with the owner to identify their need to retain pet responsibly or relinquish them. We want to change the culture. That's really our purpose. If you own a dog, you will be responsible for that dog. We will be working on specific ordinances in the coming months to aid in that required responsibility. Which brings me to the final intricate part in this plan, the council. We ask that you watch the video, ride around your district, and identify problem areas. Ride around in other districts and take pictures, make notes, share with your colleagues what you experienced. Involve animal control. Speak to your constituents. Schedule a day to ride along with animal control. A rescue that I work with primarily helps with medical costs for the community by vaccinating, spaying, and neutering. Help if you can until we can get a citywide, low-cost spay and neuter program. Please, as soon as possible, schedule an appointment to go walk through the halls of the Humane Society. See firsthand what is happening there. Contact Mitch Chastain, who single-handedly takes care of our feral cat community. Were you aware that we have multiple cat colonies in our city? Mitch sets up traps and catches the unaltered cats. Dr. Gurley spays and neuters them, and he then releases them back to their colony. He has prevented thousands of homeless cats in Gaston. Mitch travels many miles around the city every single day to feed these cats, all at his own expense. Almost every district has at least one registered cat colony. Find out from Mitch where they are in your district and help Mitch when you can. And lastly, we would like to have town hall meetings in every district as soon as possible after the New Year. If you already have a meeting scheduled, please include us to speak with your constituents for just a few moments regarding our action plan. To be successful, we must bark. B is for buy-in from all involved. A for accountability, accountability from everyone in a leadership role. R is for responsibility of pet ownership. And K is for kindness. If you see something, say something. If you can volunteer a few hours at the shelter, please do so. If your neighbor is struggling, cannot afford food for their pets this month, buy a bag. If a fence needs mending, mend fences. Thank you.
Chris, thanks for reading that and for being here today. Do we, do we have a copy of that?
I know we have the video. I'm not sure if we have a copy of that.
Could we get a copy?
Yeah, we'll get everybody a copy.
All right, you can either leave it with Ms. Nelson or you can either email it to her, however you want to do it. Thank you. Thank you for the work that y'all are doing. That's, that's very important and it's, it's such a big problem. And I mean, thank y'all for raising your hand and being willing to, to serve. We'll do all we can to help, and I know the mayor's fully on board, so thank y'all. Thank you, sir. Any other departments? I think Josh, you're here. I know you've got some, probably a lot of stuff to tell us. There is some unbelievable cold weather coming to Etowah County.
Good morning, everybody. I look forward to the day that I can come and have good news. Whenever President Back looks at the back and our gaze meets, he knows that I'm coming probably with not the best news in the world, so. Director Gaither sends her regret she was unable to be here today. She asked for me to deliver this department report. We've got some life-threatening cold that is going to be coming in over the next several days. The National Weather Service has issued a wind chill watch that will go in effect December twenty-third at midnight and last through December twenty-fourth at noon. And then they've also issued a hard freeze watch, December twenty-third at midnight through Christmas morning at nine AM. As I said, this is a life-threatening cold situation. Looking at the hourlies that the National Weather Service puts out, we could realistically see wind gusts of forty-five miles an hour and greater, which is going to drop the, the wind chills even lower. And also will exacerbate the likelihood that trees falling, power goes out, and then we've got a whole new emergency within the, the emergency. We're expecting to see single-degree digits up to ten below zero. The wind chills at times will be minus ten to zero. So I do know as far as response goes, the VOAD chairman, who happens to be the Gaston librarian, Craig Scott, he is the chairman of the voluntary organizations active in disaster, is going to be meeting with Director Gaither and also the Freedom Center tomorrow morning to, to work out a plan, a written agreement, an MOU, if you will, a memorandum of understanding so everybody knows what protocol there is as far as opening shelter and providing shelter, because in, in temperatures this cold, you know, we've not seen weather this cold in quite some time. Even your heartiest of animals is going to be looking for, you know, somewhere warm to get. So what I always remind folks to focus on is the three Ps, people, pets, and pipes when it comes to cold weather. If you've got people, of course, that, that are outside, try to get them somewhere where they can be inside and warm. Check on your elderly neighbor at the end of the street. Pets, just go ahead and, you know, I know all of us don't really like to bring our animals inside and mess up furniture or flooring or whatever. Just, just bring them inside. And even if you just put them in your garage with a space heater, anything is better than being out in minus ten. And then make sure that you wrap your pipes. Any exposed pipes, even if it's a very short span of pipe, in temperatures this cold will, will burst relatively easily. So look for the EMA to put out some more information in conjunction with VOAD over the next twenty-four hours about exactly what the response will be, but we just wanted to put it on people's radar that it is going to be life-threateningly cold.
All right, well, thank you so much, Josh. And Michael, I'm assuming everything that he's telling us about the warming stations and whatnot will be posted on our, all of our social media and released to the, our media partners?
Already there.
Great, way to go.
The EMA sent out a press release Friday afternoon that lists the warming center. Followed up with...
Great, thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks, Josh.
Absolutely.
Any other department heads, reports, or any committees, boards? I want to thank in advance, I see Chief Reed back there. I mean, fire department doesn't close and the police department doesn't close because it's cold, so I know you and your people are going to be out in it. Thank you in advance for what you're going to do, and we sure appreciate how you serve our city. Thank you so much. All right, at this point, then, item twenty-four is a march by mayor and council. Mayor Ford sent me a note. He has to go to a mayor's association meeting, so he asked me to read his comments, so I will do that now. This is a thank you to the Christmas parade. What a, what a great night it was. It, it was well-attended. I think everything went really well. I forget the total number of participants. I think it was around seventy, maybe, something like that, entrance in the parade. Saw a lot of smiling faces, saw a lot of children, what Christmas is all about. So thank you to Parks and Rec and all the city employees who helped put that together rather quickly. I know the council had a float that was put together by the Fleet Department, I believe, and they did a great job. Big thanks to them and so many people to thank. I don't want to leave anybody out, but you know who you are. Thank you for what you did. Mayor Ford says we'll be bringing items related to the master plan in January. A lot of talk about a master plan. I think our last one was finalized in nineteen seventy-four, probably been added to a little bit since then, but this is going to be a brand-new master plan for the city of Gaston, so looking very forward to that. I know there's been a lot of work already involved with that. City offices will be closed Friday, the twenty-third, and Monday, December the twenty-sixth. Also, we'll observe New Year's Day on Monday, January the second. Two new faces are coming to the city in Gaston. This is part of the mayor's new staff. Melcy Guyton will be in the mayor's office, and also Rod Scott. I know I've heard Mayor Ford speak highly of Rod Scott. He served in the state legislature for many... He's served in the state legislature for many years alongside Mayor Ford. I believe he is from the Bessemer area, but he's moving to Gaston. He's going to be a huge asset to our team. I know he has two Ivy League degrees. Highly intelligent individual. I think he's going to do very well for the City of Gaston, and we're excited to welcome Melcy Guyton and Rod Scott to the mayor's team and to the City of Gaston. Mayor Ford also wanted to note that John Moore is now an official employee of the City of Gaston. I think John must be with the mayor at the mayor's association meeting. John's been a familiar face around here since probably November the 5th. We're looking very forward to working with John. He's, what is it, Economic Development and?
Governmental Affairs.
And Governmental Affairs, kind of the position that Frankie Davis held, John stepping into those shoes, so we look forward to working with John. And also, this is pretty important, there's free transit fares this week. The mayor and his team have looked into this, and so there's no fees to ride our transit, our public transportation for this week. And last but not least, the mayor visited with some of his staff the Edrawell Youth Orchestra yesterday, who were playing at the Birmingham Airport, at the municipal airport down in Birmingham. Saw some pictures of that on social media. You know, that's just another feather in our cap. You know, we have a youth orchestra in the City of Gaston, highly acclaimed. They've played in New York City, they've played all over, and a group of them went to the airport in Birmingham yesterday and just to entertain the, the patrons that are using the airport. So, mayor was able to be there and, and witness that, and so thank you to the youth orchestra for, for all that you do for the youth of Edrawell County. We'll start this week with District 7. We'll, we'll let Chris start us off with council remarks. Mayor, I'm, excuse me, not mayor, councilman.
Mayor Robinson.
Mayor Robinson.
Never going to happen.
See, I've already done. I'm prophesizing. Is that what that's called?
Never going to happen.
I'm prophesizing up here, so there you go.
Just want to wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, stay warm, stay safe. We won't see you, we'll see them before New Year's. No. Happy New Years. Happy New Years, everybody. Everybody be safe, and do what you do.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Monatra.
I just want to acknowledge that Sunday, there was a great Christmas party, and it was here at Dream Center, and I was fortunate enough to see over 200 people, but more importantly, the ministry that Eddie Nichols does for children. And it's pretty remarkable. They have lots of plans for the future. If you've never been, you should visit. It's right across the street from Floyd Elementary, but the work that he's doing with those children is just, it's unbelievable. So it just made my heart feel so wonderful at this time of the year. So, shout out to Eddie and what he does.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson.
Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and please pray in whichever way you do to, to have a blessed 2023. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Councilman Avery.
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy Kwanzaa, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year. All of the updates concerning what the EMA has put out and about our warming stations and, and cold weather and, and those alerts, also you can find those for those that are in District 3 at, on Facebook at Counselor Avery, Larry J. Avery, and that's on Facebook. We try to put, every, every time we get those, we immediately put those on the Facebook site, so we have been getting great feedback on that. And so, to the community, everything that I will get that is public record or that can be put, shown to the public for your knowledge, I will put it in. Thank you, EMA Department, for continuously sending those. Also, just putting it out there in the air, in the atmosphere, Carver Community Center can be used as an overnight warming station, okay? So hopefully it'll get to the right ears and we can put that in place, because it's a large facility. It has a male and a female locker room with showers and all of that good stuff, so it can be used as an overnight warming center, okay? As we continue to work on increasing our facilities for those that do not have a place to go with this inclement weather. Brian, I didn't, I don't know if I thought, thanked you and your department out loud, so I'll do this for the next-door neighbor for the, the project on Tuscaloosa Avenue. She cried like a baby. She had been wanting that property, something done, and with the weather that we have come up, we have those people that are finding any place that they can shelter, and so, as we eliminated that as a hazard, not only to the neighbor but even to them because of the condition of the property. So I appreciate you and your department for that. That's very grateful for that. Mr. Cooper with Public Works, I didn't get to say thank you to, to him. I thought he was a police officer, so I'm recruiting for the police department chief. Lieutenant Hammond, I didn't get a chance to thank him. The Associate Fire Chief, thank you so much. I didn't publicly get to thank you, and of course, always, Chief Reed, for your continuous partnership and, and work. VOAD, Freedom Center, that group, and those unknown persons who play such a huge role in our homeless community, and all the efforts that are being done, that are not announced publicly or acknowledged publicly. Thank you to all what you do and, and continuous to do to make sure that those that are unfortunate and going without whatever those items are. And I'm going to work on getting the list so that we can acknowledge those, those persons, because that work is very important, and it goes unnoticed sometimes of the work. District 3 community, thank you so much. We will hit the first of the year with our meetings as we're strategically putting some things together. Going to be working with each department to come and speak in the community. We're looking for an, kind of a, and a central location so that we won't have to do two in two separate locations, so we'll do one in a central location, so everyone can get in one room, and we kind of hash some things out, talk about some things, and then we go from there. So I thank you all for your support, your patience, and the continuous efforts that we're making as a community in, in District 3 compared to always calling department heads and, and asking for them to do. One of our biggest projects that we will work on first of the year is a community cleanup. So get ready, get ready, get ready, because it's necessary, okay? Thank you so much, our year, the remaining.
Council, Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank everybody once again for all that you do. On yesterday, we had an amazing event at the venue that was hosted by my wife, who's here today, my better half. She is an educator, and she teaches, actually, special needs kids. So if you've never been around special needs children, adults, or those who are physically challenged, you know, just think about it. It's a blessing to be able to get up and comb your own hair, fix your own food, put your own clothes on, and she's very passionate about what she does. Every child left there with toys. We were at the venue yesterday in the large room, full of games, activities, bouncers, food, and so I just want to give a shout out. That was made possible in part by her foundation, Family Development, the City of Gaston in particular, former Councilman Deverick Williams, also UAB, who she's now a partner with as well. And so it was just an amazing turnout. I just want to thank all those who made that possible, and say to my fellow council members, we plan to make this an annual event. Hit, hit, clue, clue. So anyway, thank everybody, Merry Christmas, and we appreciate all of you. Thank you. Also, Ms. Haley, was there a worker in that event whom we honored today? So thank you, Ms. Haley, for putting up with us. You know, we had that event especially for special needs kids. Sometimes these parents need a safe place, and they don't have to apologize. It was set up just for them. So thank you for all the popcorn we threw everywhere, the food we dropped everywhere, so we appreciate you. Again, thank you.
Councilwoman Latham.
Yes.
It's funny going last. This is the most wonderful time of the year. With that being said, it brings love, joy, peace, and happiness, so I will say to everyone Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year.
Thank you. Just want to start by echoing Councilwoman Monatra's comments about Eddie Nichols. He's been doing that for over 40 years, always taking care of those that are less fortunate. And if, if you ever want to support people, you've just heard of two great organizations, Councilman Smith's wife and Eddie Nichols, and there's many others. You know, Gaston is truly, you know, we tout ourselves as a city of champions. That's a, that's a 60-year, 70-year-old name that the city's had, and I, I think that we are the city of champions. We, we take care of, of those that are less fortunate, and, and we do all we can for people, and it's not government people, it's you, the people. It's the citizens of Gaston that always step forward, much like the, the council that the mayor formed for the animals. I mean, it's always the people. We have good people in Gaston. And y'all, this is exciting times. I say it every week, it's, it's a joy to serve. I hope you see the friendship and the camaraderie that this council has quickly formed. You know, five new council members, never happened before in the City of Gaston except the very first council that was formed in 1986. Normally, there's one or two new council members every four years. There's a lot to learn, and we're all learning together, and, and it's just a pleasure to serve with these that you see up here. And all city employees have just done marvelous work. Department heads are moving quickly under the guidance of Mayor Ford and, and his team. If you see a city employee, thank them. And thanks especially to Ms. Haley. That's what a pleasure that, I didn't know you were coming today. I didn't know there was a proclamation for you, but it's well-deserved, and, and we need more Ms. Haley's in our, in our city. So thank you for what you do, and your friend from driving up all the way from, from Green County. That's, that's, that's quite a friendship. I don't know if I've got somebody to drive three and a half hours to come for me, so my hat's off to you. Thank you. Want to read some announcements here, so bear with me. These are fairly important. Due to the Christmas holiday, the garbage schedule the next two weeks will be as follows. This week, Tuesday's route will be picked up on regular schedule. Thursday's route will be collected on Wednesday, and Friday's route will be collected on Thursday. For the week of December 26, Monday's route will be collected on Tuesday, and Tuesday's route will be collected on Wednesday. Thursday and Friday will be picked up on the regular schedule. Also, the council will not meet on December 27, but will resume regularly scheduled meetings on Tuesday, January the 3rd. The work session will be at 10:00 a.m. and the council meeting at 11:00 a.m. Just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and one more thing?
Mr. President, if I can just, it was just relayed to me that the Humane Society Pet Rescue and Adoption Center will be waiving all adoption fees between now and the end of the year, December 31st, so if anybody is led or compelled, felt compelled to adopt, now would be a great time to do that.
Well, thank you for that, and thank you for those. I see Chief Crane out there. Thank you for what you're doing for us. That being said, we stand adjourned.